Slow, slow. Do you have anybody to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Friendly reminder that please put your phones on silent. If, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of four twenty-two twenty-five. And the change was made, please.
Yes, I see. I'll make a motion then to approve.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Why, what's up?
Consent approved, Homer Fire Department will sap report and payment.
We're not doing the town consent agenda, we're doing the minutes.
Oh, sorry, aye.
Alright then.
Now, did you set an agenda, please?
Okay, uh, the consent agenda, with exception, Mr. Pinkbinder, what do you want to look at?
Well, uh, since November, when we passed the LoSAP thing, which I'm for, by the way, that there's no accountant and we don't know the price, and I don't want to stick the taxpayers with some unknown because we've just willy-nilly gone ahead without getting all the ducks, and I've asked for this.
Yes, I've got an answer.
Couple months.
I've got an answer for you.
Well, then, maybe that's good.
But, did you check your mailbox?
Uh, yeah, I did, I opened it, there was nothing, the max there, but I didn't read it yet.
Okay.
That's just an ad, right?
No. This contains the executive report for the calculations and what we're gonna have to pay. Turns out, we won't be paying as much as we thought, uh, because for one, uh, we would put aside seven fifty, and for certain years previous, it was only seven hundred. So, that'll be significantly cheaper, uh, as we thought, not everybody qualified. Uh, so if you go through these in your inboxes, it will have the account activity, service awards by name, uh, and by balance. And what, uh, we totally owe for this year will be one fifty-two nine hundred, which is lower than what we had budgeted for. To go back to your question, Ed, about the auditing, so we did sign the extra for the audit to start us with, that they will do, however, it ultimately comes back to the village for our auditing to be done. Whoever we hire, whether it be our treasurer to do the audit, or an outside source that audits the village, which in this case would be, uh, ProNexus at this time, to would review and audit, so there's two parts there, um.
What was that?
So that's.
Now that we brought the LoSAP reporting payment out of consent agenda, I'll leave that aside and add it to the new business when you get, get down to it.
Okay.
Alright.
Uh, to keep things moving, we, so, yeah, uh, we will add, we will pull the, uh, Penflex, uh, the LoSAP reporting payment, and we will put that over into the new business or old business?
Well, you can target an old business.
We'll put it under old business. Scratching item number two from the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything else they would like to pull, or I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised?
Make a motion that we approve the revised consent agenda.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So consent agenda minus item two is approved. Uh, Treasurers' Report?
Make a motion that we authorize payment of the bills for the A Fund Vouchers number one seventy-eight through two fifty, in the amount of a hundred and six thousand, hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. From the F and G Fund Vouchers number five-six through seven-seven, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. And from the T and A Fund voucher number seven, in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and seventy cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Privilege of the floor? Okay, uh, I think we should go to, we'll do the village historian, because I think the LoSAP may be a little uh, time-consuming as we go through detail. Uh, does anybody have, um, any qualms if we move the hill village historian up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Martin? Yeah, normally I'm only required to give one report, annual one, but because it's become lengthy and tedious for certain people's ears, it was suggested by another former student of mine, Heather, from the town side of this building, that I could always do a semi-annual report with what this is. Okay, which I will combine with the one I give in November, and that will be the official written document I have to give to the county historian, the state historian, whoever else, it's copies, town and village, okay, makes sense? This will be covered from November first of twenty-twenty-four to April thirtieth. Uh, administrative task, I continue to receive artifacts and ephemera from citizens for me to determine their fates. Uh, I make frequent trips to the Cortland County Historical Society to do research, or drop off non-former artifacts that come my way. I continue to assist with monthly requests for genealogical information, and to do research on local history primarily for my news column in the former newspaper. On November fifteenth, as their consultant, I draft an example of operational values and goals, outlining a possible value statement, vision statement, and mission statement for consideration by the landmark society. But I received no response, even though I have submitted a second time for them to consider. Uh, I continue to file issues of the Homer News. Uh, and until March thirteenth, I filed a news clipping from the Cortland Standard. On that date, the last issue of the newspaper was published due to bankruptcy. This makes documenting local events in the digital age challenging for this and all local historians. I've got a paper in the file that says, on this date, the Cortland Standard died, and that's why there's no more clippings. Then they stand up again once they have another corporate standard. It remains to be seen, okay? Uh, number of office visits, not that many, the first half of the year. On November sixteenth, I met with Richard Palmer here at the town hall. Uh, he came to photograph the stagecoach trunks over here on the stage, for inclusion in a book he has written on stagecoaches and taverns in Cortland County. He provided a proof copy of the book for me to go over one last time before he headed to the printer. Uh, unfortunately, he's not going to make a lot of copies, so the one we do have in the archives is rather rare. I'm glad he did this, it's really great, and the photographs are astounding. Uh, number of phone email inquiries received, the answer is estimated, I want you to see the range of types that I get. On November tenth, received a request by phone from Ellen Ranner of Homer. She needed assistance in giving a tour of the historic district on November thirteenth to a visiting professor from Germany. I emailed her a guided walking tour script, and she could call out what she would like for her walking tour. I also met the visiting professor at her home, she was interested in American women who were active in the women's rights movement, and in particular Homer's Amelia James Blumer. It was interesting seeing someone from a foreign country who was interested in this aspect of our history. Uh, in early January, received two emails requesting to know when Homer's school first started a varsity baseball team, and who coached it. I spent most of January fourth researching in three different locations, and not coming up with much more than the early baseball teams were more town teams that played each other rather than schools. It sort of evolved, and I can't quite seem to find who that first coached by. Uh, in mid-January, I had a series of productive conversations by email with Ty Marshall and Ed Ralph's Ways to Promote Historic Homer by means of the promotionals of the Center for the Arts, combined the two together. Ty had some very good ideas. Uh, let's see, let's go to the next page, I thought I had the pages numbered. Um, number of municipal meetings attended. On January eighth, attended the town board meeting to be available for any discussion and vote regarding authorization for Westlake Conservatives to work on the over porches by carpenter, which we now have a bag, and I'll present to the town tomorrow night, and then put them back up on the wall out here. Uh, January fourteenth, attended the village board meeting to witness the swearing-in of the next mayor, or soul, Patrick Kwon, and to speak of the first time I met him, which was, I knew we were in for trouble.
True.
Uh, no, 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 meetings out of office. Meetings out of office, uh, let's get down to, um, well, I participated in some book sales and book signings. Oh, at the very bottom of the page, it's interesting, and early January, I visited Classy Cannabis, okay, the first cannabis dispensary in the county. They wanted to know what company items I wanted to purchase, and I said, I'm not ready yet. When I get older, I might need some painkillers. Uh, and I visited the parking lot, dog room, to welcome the owners and to see what has been done architecturally to these business sites. The former, within the historic district, has taken great pains to maintain the historic architecture inside and out, for which I commended them. Uh, hop to the next page, on January seventeenth, spent the afternoon transporting a huge wooden easel, I mean huge, and four light fixtures from the History Center at Keybank to the town hall. The fixtures were part of the light sconces along the interior walls of this hall, when it was leased to the Capitol Movie Theater. The easel and two of the sconces are stored in the elevator mechanical room. Uh, this easel could be used by the village too for display purposes, or a bulletin board is the big one-piece sucker, it's huge. The other sconces are displayed right out here. Put the other theater artifacts on the stage. Uh, on the week of February sixteenth, I spent part of three days participating in the library crawl, sponsored by six public libraries in the area. At the same time, I donated copies of any of my books that they did not already have on their shelves. This way, I might be able to educate others about the history of Homer, which is the mother town of Cortland County. It all began with us. Uh, March fifth, I accept the invitation from Charles and Stephanie Spina to tour their amazing nineteenth-century sunflower house in the historic district, and especially to view the eleven paintings by Homer's nineteenth-century artist Edward Levens that I never knew about, and one carpet report that they have in their collection. Uh, March twenty-second, I accept the invitation to attend the Cortland Presbyterian Church's two-hundredth anniversary celebration, which was an interesting musical performance, paying tribute to the church's past. And I know Homer residents participated, uh, both as members of the congregation back in the day and people in the performance that night. And the next one was interesting, March twenty-third, I attended a band of sisters, a lecture by Sophie Cloud of the Cortland County Historical Society, on the county's role in the nineteenth-century women's dress reform movement. This was held at the historic, this presentation was held at the Historic Unitarian Church in Cortland. And Sophie announced her research discovery, this was amazing, that the first convention of the dress reform movement, boomers, was held in Homer's Congregational Church, contrary to information chatted by another organization online, which she has since had them changed. Uh, I've invited Sophie to be a guest columnist in my column of the Homer newspaper to tell this story. I think absolutely fascinating, the feminist movement. Um, for exhibits, I mentioned the two Capitol Theater sconces are displayed out here. Public lectures and presentations, uh, on November fourth, I give a talk to the Cortland Community Service Club on two prominent businessmen of nineteenth-century Homer, William Brockway and Siggs Otell. On November twelfth, submitted to Ty Marshall and Kim Hubbard, a first draft of a one-act play I put together in six days' time on the significant historical figures of Homer's past. I proposed this to be a project at the start of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the origins of our nation, back in seventeen seventy-five to seventy-six. So, the one-act play is called The Inheritance. And they, they would like to make it the first performance ever done at the new renovated little white church, but that's not gonna happen by twenty-twenty-one-six. We do it during the bicentennial, right? And on February nineteenth, I was the guest speaker at the Cortland Breakfast Royalty Club, I spoke on my published biography of Albert Heskey Junior that won an award for nonfiction. And of course, I continue to occupy space in Homer News, let's see, last page, we're getting there. Um, historic preservation projects, you well know, I continue to monitor the proposal to permit digital signage within the historic district. You know my position on that. Uh, heritage tourism projects, on February seventeenth, notice was received that a William G. Pomroy Foundation Historic Roadside Marker to the Elizabeth Brewster House was granted. Since October, I expedited this project at the request of the administration of this historic landmark. The marker arrived at my residence on April thirtieth, and I'm waiting for the Brewster House, let me know their plans for when it's to be installed, which has to be done by the DPW. This becomes village problem to install and to maintain. Uh, but I haven't heard when they want to do this, so it remains in my garage until further notice. Um, conferences and workshops attended, April fifth, took my turn to host the public historians of the county here at the town hall for a quarterly gathering. I provided a brief tour of the historical town hall before the meeting. Many of them are just jealous that I've got an office. Acquisitions, uh, November fourth, received an extensive deed from Michael McMahon, which cites David Hannum possessing property on the Scott wrote in Homer. This has been archived and described in an article I put in the Homer newspaper. Uh, other items been received, a barman's helmet and a recipe booklet put out by the Conde Digital Church Women's Fellowship back in nineteen eighty-two. Um, this is interesting. Cheers. Uh, on March nineteenth, David Quinlan of Homer donated to the town this white mug with the image upon it of Homer's earliest schoolteacher and town clerk, Aiden Webb, that I mentioned, this is ironic, you should mention Webb tonight. Uh, the image was from a photograph. Quinlan had taken a Webb's portrait by Francis B. Carpenter that is owned by the Cortland County Historical Society. But since the society denied a request to have the portrait on loan to the town, Quinlan, getting upset, found another way to have Webb's image grace the stage at the town hall. Now, what I'm going to present to the town tomorrow night is another way to get around this. Another way to get around this, which, um, Quinlan has had a remarkable reproduction there. If, if you look at it, it's on canvas. This photograph imposed on canvas. If, if you didn't know better, you would think this is an original carpenter. Uh, I checked with the town attorney, and, uh, it's, it's in the, the public domain, you don't have to. All I would do is if we had it put up someplace here, or out front, or whatever, because it was a town clerk. Um, the explanation marker would indicate that the original is in the Cortland County Historical Society. But it's another way of getting Aiden Webb mentioned and possibly named on a street.
I don't know, it's a town clerk, not a village clerk.
So what? There was no village till eighteen thirty-five, so there.
So, that sounds pretty good.
That land out there was farmland, and I don't know who the original farmer was, you know? I'll be tempted by a barber, he owned most of it. Really?
That would be great.
Um, then, on April fourteenth, this was rather unique, I received a donation from Jewel Van Sant. With any plastic sleeve was stationery of the Philadelphia National League Club, bearing the name of baseball scout Dewey Graves and his Homer phone number. Uh, some of this was passed along to the History Center at Keybank, so they would have copies. This is a most unique artifact, which I will attach, there's multiple copies of two types of stationery. So that's baseball history from Homer. A bat, stationary?
Non-stationary, but baseball history from Homer in the upstairs of our building, you already see what I've got, we'll have to match and see what, yeah, come visit me sometime, yeah. And we've got two days to spend.
So, respectfully submitted, that's it, was that short enough?
That was good.
That's good. I have former students who just don't want to listen to lengthy lecture.
I was not the one who started this, just have to say.
Now, too late now.
You gave me another idea for the road, Sottella Avenue.
So, alright, I will accept a motion to accept the historian's report, six-month report.
I will make a motion to accept the historian's report.
I'll second that.
Alright, I am wanting to go out of order here again, because we have a representative from the Homer Little League. Uh, and I am sure that although, uh, uh, sewer pumping stations and other stuff is totally fascinating, I think this would be a relatively quick thing that we can get through, if you look into your packet, um, after the B and L, uh, you will see who do we have from the?
Uh, so my name's Josh Bulley, I'm the president of the conference.
Oh, okay, got your email before, nice to put a name with the base.
Yes. Well, um, I have some other, I have a rendering basically of what we want to do, I'm making a little bit of signage.
Josh, why don't you go ahead and give a brief, now, the, the trustees have a copy of the email you sent me.
Okay.
But if you want to give a brief overview of what you're asking, uh, that'd be great.
So, uh, so Chris Sweeney, um, lived, he would, he lived in McGraw, he went to Portland State, graduated Portland State. He has been involved with Homer Little League for twenty-five plus years, and was the president for twenty years. And he recently passed away in February, cancer, um. So, he was a huge, huge figure in Homer Little League, he is, I don't know if you guys had the chance to meet him, but I never met a more pleasant, upbeat guy in my life. And he suckered me into joining the board about four years ago.
That's how it works.
I have a ten-year-old in the program and a five-year-old ready to get started. So I'm gonna be around the program for a while, but I, I've made it very important to us on the board to make sure that his name isn't forgotten in the Homer Little League history, so this year, what we did was, on all our hats, we had his initials embroidered on the back of every Homer Little League hat for this season only. We had his family on opening day, we presented them with some gifts, we had his son throw the opening pitch. I don't know if you guys are aware, but the the challenger division in Little League is actually chartered through District Eight in Syracuse. We are one of the only Little Leagues that have our own challenger team that's part of that program. It is the biggest challenger league in the entire United States, possibly the entire world. And they've won Emmys, uh, broadcast Emmys for games being broadcast, it's a, it's a big, big deal. And so we had him throw the opening pitch to the Dr. Dan Davis at Portland State, who started our challenger program. He caught the opening pitch from Chris's son, Chris Sweeney Junior. Uh, so what we're, what we want to do is, Chris was, Chris, Chris's big thing was his opening day hot dog, and being able to emcee the opening day ceremony. Um, I didn't feel like I could do it justice this year, so we actually had Chris Allinger from Q Country be our emcee for opening day for Homer Little League this year. Uh, but what we wanted to do is, this building at Briggs Field, um, so the T-ball field, the, the majors field and the minors field all had names. Uh, they're named after folks from Little League past. The building didn't have a name. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to put this sign, Sweeney's Sound and Snack Shack, because this is the building where our P A equipment is, our concession stand. And basically, it would look like, like that, um. It, it'd be a four-by-eight sign, permanent sign, that we would have affixed to the building, where you can see it from the low, Homer Little League is blue, Homer colors are blue and white, so we want blue and white. Um, and then we, Chris, the scoreboards that are on the two actual Little League fields there were, Chris actually drove down to Pennsylvania to get those years ago from a school that was getting rid of them as a donation. The one really doesn't work real well, so you'll see in the packet, there's a, a new scoreboard. Um, we're paying with all of this from funds donated that his family put in the obituary in lieu of flowers. Please donate to Homer Little League, where we received over eleven thousand dollars in cash. For our little, little league, so, um, we're gonna pay for all of this, everything we do is donation, we, we charge a minimal fee for the participants, everything else is sponsorships and donations, we pay the village, use the fields. Um, and so basically, anything we do there is, we do it, and then it's a donation to the village. Um, so, I'm hoping to get approval to put this sign on there. And I know Kevin had already responded that we don't need a permit to replace the scoreboard. Um, that should be on its way, if, if, that's because I was anticipating being able to get that, so, we want to have all this in place, we do a movie night end of June. Um, Andrew Pierce gives us the equipment, he runs it, uh, last year was the first year, another one of Chris's ideas, huge, great turnout, we had over a hundred families there on the field watching a movie. Um, that didn't start till like eight-thirty at night, everybody stayed. It's actually freezing cold night in Jersey, but everybody stayed. It was a big, big turnout for our concession stand, we have that open. And this year, because opening day was so rainy, we, we turned opening day into a celebration affair, basically, we have carnival games, we have all kinds of stuff. So we weren't able to do that, we want to do that, include that in movie night, we want to invite Chris's family and unveil these um, dedications to him, if, if this gives approval. So that, that is our goal, that is our plan.
Do board members have any questions for Josh?
I already talked to him, I love it.
Yeah, just a comment, I think these, um, the graphics that you've done, the, the markups look great. It's a wonderful tribute, and we did something similar from the money donated from the Kathy Stage family this year for the softball program. Some, someone in the family had died and requested that donations come to the village to support the softball program. And so a sign was unveiled at, at the field, um, commemorating what she had done for the program, so I think it's really kind of, you know, neat, poignant to honor Chris the same year, and, you know, it looks terrific.
So on that note, I've been working with Andrew, they're gonna play some of those Kathy Stage games at our fields this season, uh. I also am the flag football coordinator for Andrew, so, um, youth flag football, which we're trying to expand this year as well. So I work with him quite, quite closely. Um, he's been trying to pay me for it and get a stipend, I've been declining, I'd rather go into the program, I'm feeling that.
Well, make a motion that we accept, uh, your plan at stake.
I was thinking that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, can I go then?
Yeah. Have a good idea, so you can get out of here.
Alright, thank you.
Another, we build a dream.
Yeah, that's a long one. It's the best, it is, it's on the list.
Okay.
You build it, they will come.
Alright. So, we'll go now to, uh, Jaclyn from B and L to give us an update on the, uh, sewer pump station project.
Hi, everyone, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Pat, I don't think anyone would disagree with you, I think a lot of people agree that pump stations are not the most glamorous talking point, so don't blame you all there. I've actually learned a lot about the history of the area today, so I, I very much enjoyed listening to the historian's report. Um, but today, I wanted to just join in, it's been a few months since I've talked with you all, been to one of the board meetings to give an update on the water and sewer projects, so we're coming to a really good, um, point in the project, uh, so I figured it'd be a good, good time to give you all an update, so um, starting off with pump stations, since you brought it up, uh, we are nearing final design for the sewer project. Um, if you all recall, there's two contracts, there's one contract for the main pump station, and then there's a separate contract for a majority of the smaller pump stations throughout the sewer system. And it would be a full rehabilitation project, bringing them up to code, and with complete, complete replacement of all of the pumps, um, and get, getting them in all working, reliable order. So, um, we're getting close to final design, we're looking to submit that for agency review, close to the end of the month, or a little bit into June. Um, and then that gets handed off to the D E C and to E F C, the funding agency, for them to review and provide us comments on, and hopefully approvals. I will warn you, that's been taking a long time, uh, agency reviews have been taking about six months lately. So I don't anticipate hearing back anytime soon, once those drawings and specifications get submitted. The good news is that that gives us some time to apply for some additional funding for the project, so we do have some hardship loan that's been secured for the project. That is a zero percent interest loan. Uh, it essentially equates to about just shy of two million dollars in grant for the project, that's interest savings that you don't have to pay back. Um, but we've not received any of the VIA grants that we've applied for just yet, so we're looking to reapply for the VIA grant program. So we're looking to reapply for the V I A grant program. Um, and then we're also looking to reapply for the W Q I P grant program. So that's a grant through New York State D E C itself. Um, and those funding announcements usually come out around December timeframe. So that is about the same time. We'll, we would look to get the approvals back on the drawings. And then we'd be able to proceed with bidding out the project and then eventually construction into next year. Um, built into that timeline at the end of the, the agenda I sent out is, um, our, a proposed schedule moving forward. Built into that timeframe includes a pause after we get bids back on the project. And then the board can review those bids and decide what the best path forward is. Project costs have increased a little bit, um, but I think that we could still get a majority of the project done. Especially if, if more grant is received for the project, we would be able to get a lot of that project done. So. That'll give the board some time just to review the bids that are received and make sure that you all are ready. And willing to move forward with the project before we actually, you know, hit start with, with the contractor. So again, that would be looking to go into construction next summer. Do you have any questions on the sewer project?
Yes, I just, uh, so we're separating the main pump station and the smaller pump stations into two separate. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep, and some of the thought process behind that is the, the bigger pump station is just, oh, there's a lot more involved in it. Uh, there's some H VAC work, some mechanical work, electrical on top of just your general contractor. So it's, it's just a big project on its own. Um, so you wanna make sure that you get some really good bids for that project. As we've also discussed with Keith, that's, that's a pump station that. He, although, you know, would love to be able to tackle that project himself, it's, it's sometimes best. To give that over to a contractor to work on. Um, but the smaller pump stations are something that if the funding's not there, he can tackle a little bit at a time. Potentially moving forward. It's a little bit easier chunks to bite off for him. So we wanted to make sure that there was that flexibility built into the project. So that if, for whatever reason, there's not enough funding or the board decides that the bids come in too high. We can easily take out some of those smaller pump stations for Keith to proceed with at a, at a later date.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Um, so moving on to the water project, that actually is following a very similar timeline. We are right into final design for that. We're wrapping that up as well. Also anticipating submitting that for agency review here at the end of the month or beginning of June. Um, some minor or some scope revisions, uh, were made after we met with Keith and Dan. At the, I think it was end of January, we reviewed our sixty percent design set with them. We reviewed some cost estimates with them. And at the time, it was decided that the pump station that was being proposed at the tank site and the small water main extension. Uh, was an added cost to the project that really wasn't necessary. The, the real priority for this project was, uh, constructing a brand new tank. And replacing the two old steel tanks on the other side of the village. So we wanted to really focus on that and make sure that we were able to proceed with that project. So we did remove the pump station and that water main extension from the scope of the project at that time. We have put together a basis of design memo for that work, however, cause we are, we were at sixty percent design at that point. So if the, the funding comes through and there's more money than anticipated. Or if the village wants to pick this up in ten years, that memo is a, a great starting point for the design. And, and basically memorializes where we were at, at that point in design.
Uh, Jaclyn, the, uh, the need for that is most likely going away. Uh, so, yes.
Dan had indicated that, though it, it became less of a priority. So we really wanted to make sure that we pivoted and really focused on the tank, which has always been the, the top priority for that water project.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Um, so again, yes, we're planning for submission here at the end of the month or beginning of June. Again, probably about six months before we get, uh, agency review and approvals for that. And again, that gives us some more time to secure some funding for the project. So. Uh, New York State E F C has offered a loan for the project. Unfortunately, it's just a market rate loan. It's not the hardship loan that we were targeting. That is simply because of the score for the project. It's not as attractive as a project. Where, you know, they've, a village or a town has had major issues with their system. Um, Keith has done a really good job. Buzz did a really good job before him at making sure that there were no. Emergencies in the system. Um, but again, that means that the, the project score just wasn't there to get the zero percent hardship loan. But E F C did still offer a market rate loan. Um, but in the meantime, there's some more funding opportunities that'll come out this summer. So again, we'll target a V I A loan. Um, that's through E F C. Um, another application that we're working on is a loan through, or a, a grant, sorry, through U S D A Rural Development. That's an application we've, we've drafted. We're just looking to wrap up the final last details so that. Uh, we can get that submitted and see if R D will offer any grants for the project. And then ultimately, another funding application that we're looking to target is C D B G. So if you all remember, we did apply for that last year. It was not successful. It is a grant that once it is, uh, received. That the project has to move into construction within six months of the grant. Um, so they're really looking for shovel-ready projects. Um, and that was a application that we ourselves did not submit. That was through Jay Grasso for G and G. He submitted that last year. I've talked with him about the potential of resubmitting and I've given him some updates on where we're at in design. And he thinks that submitting for agency review will make the, the application a stronger application. It will show that the village is project ready, they're shovel-ready to move forward. Uh, so his suggestion was to reapply and he said that he would do that for the same price as last year. Which would include the entire application, re-updating all of the information and addressing any additional comments that C D B G. Um, might have, or, you know, they always throw in a few extra questions that weren't there last year. So. Um, if that was something that the board wanted to proceed with, then let me know. And I can have Jay put together a formal proposal for you all. They have not announced the deadline for that, but we are anticipating end of July, which is about where it's been the last two or three years.
If, uh, they would put together a formal proposal, I think we would like to review it. Is that?
Yep.
Yes.
I will let him know and see if he can get that over to you before your next meeting. Um, and again, all of these grant opportunities are stuff that we anticipate hearing back around December. Is usually when those funding announcements are. That would also be the anticipated date that we would hear back on the agency reviews and approvals. And then we can proceed with bidding out the project, making sure that the costs are where we'd like to see them. And then moving forward with design or with construction in the summer of next year.
Does anybody have any questions for this discussion?
No, I like it. We need to, we've gotta work on our infrastructure. Well, this is, this is important to me.
I appreciate the update.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Have a great night, everyone.
You too. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right. Uh. Shall we go back to Lo Sap now or do we wanna continue through D through I?
Your call there.
All right. Let's go back to the Lo Sap. You guys have your packets from your.
You want me to get your, that on the color?
Yeah, that's what mine was.
So this is part of what we will get every year is the annual report. Gives us, if you, if you look through, it gives us, uh, the numbers and the participants. And what they have, uh, done or not done. So what we have right now, and this is on the fire department is. For the service award upcoming entitlements, uh, they need to, uh, complete the form, which there's a copy of in here. And then they have to resubmit things back. Uh, to go back with the auditing process, uh, they will, as we signed off or approved last time. Was they will put together essentially an audit-ready packet. And then it comes to our auditor, whoever, either our treasurer or if we wanna get another outside auditor to review. Now, this year, because of, uh, our personnel status, we have Penflex. Uh, doing our, our auditing in our A F R. In future, uh, we don't necessarily have to go with them, but we may want to.
I was under impression you had to have an independent auditor, not us, that saw it had to be somebody outside. And. I know what we paid in Sarah years ago.
If you believe that to be the case. Okay, so, yeah.
And so that's why, then, you know, that was like twenty thousand bucks and that, that was like ten years ago. So it's probably fifty grand now. So are we prepared?
This is, you just wanna, I'm just gonna audit this Penflex. So you can roll it in together, but we could also just.
But I mean, I'd like to know what it is.
Yeah.
Before we obligate the village. That's all. I, I'm for Lo Sap a hundred percent. It's just, I just wanted to watch, watch.
Is that something we would have to do an R F P for or can we, uh? Okay. I'm sorry.
We do R F Q.
R F Q, okay. So let's do an R F Q, uh, for the, uh. Just this, not the village as a whole. Just for this.
I'd be happy with estimates. That's what I mean, R F Q would do that. I'd say, doesn't have to, you know, we don't have to sign enough, you know. Is it five thousand, ten thousand, two thousand? I don't know. That's all. That's.
For their budgeting. I mean, we committed to. Commit to the associated costs, but we have to know.
So, but I ask that you guys take a look at this. This will give us, uh, I will do that, of our costs minus the outside. Uh.
Well, for it. So it's a great, great program and I'm glad we did it.
Okay. Uh, next up, approve the hiring of two village office interns at seventeen dollars an hour. You guys can see their resumes back here. Both of them have worked for the village before. Both of them have done phenomenal work before.
Agreed.
Yes. It's great that they're coming back.
So, and that may get them into involved in future politics and giving back to the community. So I'm. Hundred percent. So I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, the resumes and, uh, offers for interns or somewhere.
He's glad, Dan, if you have projects ready or. Very capable go-getters.
That is true.
I second that too.
Okay. Uh, all in favor? So it is for Lucia Caravella and Matthew, uh. Hourly rate of seventeen dollars an hour. Right. The, this next up is the annexing into the town of Homer, three properties on Wolf Road. This has been something that's been discussed many, many times before and as we are moving through the process. Uh, just need that the, uh, village has no issues and consents to this.
Just a resolution saying you consent to the.
So, yeah, the public hearing next time, we had the resolution at that time. Right. So, okay, so.
Several of these property owners came to one of our village meetings about seven months ago to tell us. Why it is that they work.
Hold off the next. Yeah. So we'll do the, we'll post the public hearing and we're at that point. Next would be a new labor hire for the D P W. Uh, one of their previous hires left for another job. Uh, so. We are now looking to hire Adam Menard at D P W. Um. Dan, do we have to have the hourly rate in, in this one as well?
I do not know what the rate is. It's gonna be, uh, minimum or a little bit above minimum, but is, it's, what if their labor rate be? Have, which is just our approvals.
I just wanted to make sure we were straight with the civil service.
Yeah, I just, I don't have the rate. We did discuss that with Phil.
Nice. Uh, you guys can see the resume here. I will accept the motion to accept Adam Menard at, uh. The rate to be determined by the village. They've charted.
Make a motion to accept Adam Menard for the labor position that rate.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Next up, we have the, accept the village cemetery report. Of the. Cemetery has suffered some significant rain damage with mud and markers. I've already talked with, uh, all village and, and Ford about the damage. They are working to rectify it. And we're looking to do some other things in place to. Uh, better notify, no, better notification. But other than that, I will accept a, a motion.
I'll make a motion and accept the cemetery report.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. We had kind of a pretty meeting verbal discussion, but, uh. The Arbor Flats is progressing. They have the lots, but now for, uh, addressing purposes, they need a street name. So we've discussed, uh, Wet Place, Hastings Lane, uh.
Through a carpet.
Carpenter Lane, yes. Or Carpenter Road, maybe. Brockway Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
Brockway Avenue.
Brockway Court.
Circle. Now, we have, uh, but I do have a question. I have to go to planning board, whether or not we need one name or two names. So I will go back and check with them just to make sure that we wanna do this once. We wanna do it right.
Better help the mailman and, uh, you know, it's gotta do all. All the forms where we put all the crazels and all that stuff.
Yeah, I think the county planning usually has some involvement and one of the most positive they do. Now, they can lead you to right, into the right direction, but I'm almost thinking I agree with that. It might be that one street might be, one name might be better than two.
Yeah, I'll talk to the treasurer.
On the entry street, is there lots on either side of it as you get in there?
Yeah.
You could live on that entry street.
You could.
Okay.
Yeah, but then it breaks off in circles around.
Yeah.
Right, it goes, I represent it. I'm sort of, I'm totally confident out. And I, but I can say this, it goes up, then goes to, to the, to the left. And then it goes more to the right. That's where the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, yeah. I have a copy, so after the meeting, I can show you the map. So that was most discussion. We'll come back to that. All right. Uh, here are. The three contracts for the D R I. Uh. This is for.
We can figure some ones, right, but, uh.
Yeah, there's a big one and two small ones.
Yeah.
Smaller.
Create a downtown marketing and signage program. The Water Street. Bridge and the Community Fairgrounds. Our attorney has reviewed them and said that they are good. Uh, I just need the board's authorization for me to sign as the mayor. And start the bureaucratic process of sending these up to the state.
Are you happy?
I am happy enough to sign them and get these things started.
Backing you up then.
All right.
Yes, good to see some progress.
Right.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into these three D R I municipal project state contracts.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. So I will sign these tonight. We will get them started. Yeah, Dan is already starting on our R F Ps. So we're gonna be doing concurrent actions. Uh. You'll get our, some of our R F Ps back. Hopefully these will come back in time again. And.
What does the R F P mean?
Request or proposal. Uh, so these will be, uh, administering the grants as well as. Uh, which will take a lot of the pressure off because as you can see, there's a lot of thou shals and thou shalt nots. And we just don't have the bandwidth. Uh, so we'll get some other folks in there that will help. Ensure that everything goes properly to keep the state happy.
Does this mean that, that there are?
Does this mean that that there are developers ready to do these things or?
We don't know. So, for some of these, like our uh, our Community Fair Grants. We have to go out and we're gonna have to, not only are we gonna get the admin administrator, but we're gonna have to then get a. Uh designer to come in and take a look. And then we'll have to go with that, and then once the designer is approved. Or our satisfaction, our community that's gonna meet our needs, then we can sell those parts out, and they'll have a plan to do it. Uh same with the signage, same with the, now the the Water Street Bridge is a little bit different because we already have a. Village engineer that's familiar with bridges, uh as we're working on something else with the I D A. So we can start that process a little sooner. Uh but then, when it comes time to bidding out all the required materials and subcontractors, then we'll have that. Let me answer your question then.
Fantastic, okay.
We're making progress.
Like a, like a glacier, but we're moving.
Do you, can I ask a question? Do you know if other projects, like some of the other funds have been like the status of that or?
With uh some of the other uh projects?
Yes.
Uh I have talked with some other ones and they are moving slowly. Some are moving forward with their own funds, some are are not. But the rest is not for me to discuss. All right. Uh I will sign these. Read. Privilege of the floor.
I appreciate that.
Or or firing squad, whichever.
And then take your choice. Um one update tonight from me, May twentieth, eight o'clock in the morning. Uh floor three, the county office building, special finance administration committee meeting. Two items that will be discussed, it will most likely be a lengthy meeting. One, the fiscal state of the county, two, the state of sales tax. So if you are willing and able, I would strongly advise. Uh any who are concerned with either of those two things to attend that particular meeting. May twentieth, eight, eight, what room? Uh uh three O two, okay, level three, yeah. That's it from me.
Uh thank you for what you're doing for the village. Appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Nothing.
Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay. Uh comments by board members, we'll start on, you know, we always start with you. But I'm thinking we're gonna switch things up to, is that okay? We're gonna start with the other.
Uh I was glad to uh see Andrew Fagerhine walking around the village last night with his family and very excited to get started. With the village, um very enthusiastic about doing work for the village, so.
He's a smart dude.
Yeah.
He's gonna go fire.
Yeah, he's gonna be off to Rome next the, next semester for his architectural studies, so he'll be there all semester. Anyways, that was nice to see him and he's very excited. Uh he's also a great resource for uh some architectural uh. Advice and he knows quite a bit about historic homes and he's studied quite a bit homers, historic homes, so.
May may tag him for historic bridges.
Yes, that's something like that, you know, it's a good resource to have for sure, for sure. And um Lucia is very just very nice, very nice person, I don't know her as well as I know you, but it's nice to have. Yeah, young, young folks wanting to to help out.
And come back year after year.
Yeah.
Must be doing something for.
Well, that, that's it.
Liz?
Um I have a question about trees.
Yes.
So um I know that trees have to be culled, they die, totally fine. Um I haven't seen many planted on the green, I was kind of curious if there was a schedule, yes. So what the how, what the process is for the replacement or replenishment of the ones on the green.
Yeah, we need to get with uh the First Religious Society and discuss uh some preliminary. Uh decisions have been made about keeping the trees uh further away from the sidewalk to prevent uprooting. Uh but as far as the replacement trees, we have some, but we just need to coordinate with the First Religious Society as per the. Agreement of nineteen fifty-two.
Of course, yes, okay. Is that something that's gonna happen to someone? Is that a, I don't know what the, I don't know what the timeline.
The, the, the timeline is fluid on that because we've got some other things that we are working with the First Religious Society on, and that takes a priority.
Okay.
Elizabeth?
Thank you, nothing.
Ed?
Hey, LEDs zoning changes, we are all here, when can we meet?
Yes, that, that was uh on the uh calendar for me to look at is. Well, do you have anything else before I get to that?
I can bitch and moan, but it won't help any.
Okay. So I.
Nothing constructive.
All right, so I said I was gonna send out a doodle poll and I failed miserably. Uh so if we could.
I wouldn't even know how to do it, so. What they say.
Oh, all right, so I just, does any, chief, do you have anything for us from lovely Washington D C?
Lot of rain down here, that's about it.
Keep it down there, we've had enough.
Well, it's heading your way, so I think they got uh over an inch, they're talking about up to three.
Thanks, Bill. Anything else, chief?
No, that's it, you guys all set?
Yep, we're all set.
Thank you, yep, Mike.
All right, let's take a look at our calendars.
I do have one more question uh before we go there. I was given the beautification file.
Yes.
I'm ready to go, I don't know what to do. Um I don't know what I'm supposed to do with the beautification folder. Am I supposed to go and contract with uh and and try to get some flowers? Am I supposed to do that?
No.
Because I'm, I'm ready to go.
I'm on your team also.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Are you easy to work with?
No.
Me and my brother and you, so we can all vote you.
What we need is uh, we had some wonderful ladies that did it for years and years, they were wonderful. They got a little torked off once, we had to go with the lowest bidder that complied with the R F P, which is arms, and they didn't like. So they all resigned. So we need to get more people. You know, and and what they did is they go through like the Christmas decorations and say, hey, these are good. And maybe we gotta change them, and they would come to us and we would, you know, put some money away to get some new wraps or some new lights. Or, you know, the flowers, you know, and then they would pick out, hey, we want uh that uh box of flowers in front of the. Town hall here, I want those there, and I want one over there, that kind of stuff and and that, and and so they, they did that. And then uh um again, Kevin was putting flags up on two eighty-one, because there's not a whole lot of. Stuff on two eighty-one, and I know Pat's uh son during his Eagle Scout thing. Did some boxes that are down by our ribbon path, which I didn't wanna get into.
Guess what I'm wondering is what do I have to do? If I've got to put like flags up?
No, no, you don't have to do anything.
So, and I'll also, I will also. Your first and foremost is we need to reconstitute the beautification committee.
How do we do that?
We keep that, you go, you go tap on people.
I have asked one person to see if she's interested, I will get you her name for a follow-up. Uh you check with other people. And I will also give you uh Kevin Slack's number, so you can talk with him as well, because he had some other things and he knows other people that that can help.
I just don't wanna be late on something.
No, you're not late, we're just, you and I.
We don't have flowers.
The flowers this year are taken care of.
They are beautiful.
Yeah, you might ask Phil if he's got any people who he would recommend to them, the person who always does the community garden, donate food.
Oh, Jane Hall. I just wanna make sure.
It's not hard, it's just that that that's what they generally do. Hey, look at the lights, I don't like those lights or I like a mirror. So it's, it's other ideas for the village. Let's paint those agway things and and as aside, again, now you got me started.
You know, but Liz also has another appointment, so. Uh so we just need to get this date.
Sorry about that.
Can you do a slide zoom, by the way?
The meeting? No, she has to go down.
For this next one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm available anytime.
Here's, you can take a look at that. What we'll be looking at is specifically the B three, which is research and development park. Research and Technology Park, so it's very focused on one.
Specific.
Specific area. All right, our next meeting is the twenty-seventh. Uh we would have to do a posting of a public workshop, correct, Dan? So the earliest if he posted this tomorrow. Ten, well, that's not an award.
Yeah.
Uh and then the twenty-eighth through the thirtieth, I am out and I'll talk to you about that later.
Yeah.
So the earliest we're looking at is June. June second.
Can we do a lot of this, just through emails? Cause I'm for it, I mean. Are we gonna have to say I want that house in it and not that house?
No, because this is gonna be, this is just the B three zone, the research and technology park.
And.
Which is.
What are we gonna say? It's gonna be incorporated or not?
We are gonna say what signage is allowed in there. The research and technology park is over by the cemetery across.
Right, right.
And that is the its own section. Now, when they transchanged it from a planned development district. To a research and technology park, they did not add any sign specifications for that section. So, we have essentially carte blanche to. Create the code for what signage is available there, because there's nothing that reverse to an R one residential signage. Which makes no sense for a research and technology park.
But we can tie that into our other signage, should be similar. I like the idea of it similar. Across the board, wherever we have signs are allowed.
That would take us, I think, more time. And.
They need a decision quickly.
Well, they don't need a decision quickly, but F H N has been very spot on with everything that we have asked.
I agree.
And so, this is one of those things where we can look at a specific area. And we can get that straight, and then we can use that to figure out how we wanna proceed. This is sort of like a. Uh not a test run for us, because it's gonna be final once we decide this. But this is an area that we can look at and decide how we wanna proceed further. Where there is more houses nearby, where there is more other things involved.
So for this meeting, are we coming with a proposal to, or is this just an open meeting for people to?
This will be like a workshop, so work session for us to hash out all these things that we're talking about. To see what we find acceptable, unacceptable, to get smart on six millimeter versus eight millimeter pixel size.
For F H N to come to though, if they've got an idea of what they want.
They do have an idea of what they want, and this was the draft, and they're gonna be sending me the specifications. For, and that, those specifications will allow us to look at the impact on the area around it.
And while we're doing that, can we start thinking about the specs that we're gonna use for a historical district?
We, we can look at that, but.
It's gonna be the same.
Let's, let's, yeah, pick a date, it's gonna be sometime in June.
I would say not June third, just because that's the day of very great. I don't know, I would be all for it.
June third is also. There's another, there's gonna be another caucus on June third, so. I'm sure they're gonna hold, I'm sure they're gonna wait for you.
Yeah, yes.
So, fourth, fifth, like to stay awake until Friday, because nobody wants to.
Either of those days are fine, I think.
Okay, uh let's shoot for fourth. This, this will be in the evening.
Okay.
Ed Porter, you're.
I'm done with my class now, thank you.
Liz, uh Elizabeth?
Fine, after five thirty.
So if we shoot for six?
It's fine.
Okay. Six, June fourth. Sign zone workshop. Dan, can you post that tomorrow for uh public?
Uh I'll talk to you tomorrow about, but. Some specifics that need laid out, to make sure we're publishing the right thing.
Okay. All right. I have some things here, Liz, uh if you need to.
What are some things, just another?
Oh, I'm just adding a bunch of committees, adding you to a bunch of committees.
Kind of curious what you're making, giving me.
So Little League and Kathy Stage phenomenal turnout. Uh Little League had a rain day, but they had an awesome parade, Kathy Stage had a gorgeous day. And again, another phenomenal turnout, so Rec is knocking it out of the park. Uh Linear Park, uh Toma has a couple more documents that Dan's gonna have to sign this week. Has Rich reached out to you yet? All right, I will contact him tomorrow. Uh we're nitpicking our way to conclusion here. Treasure search, we have one so far, uh just got it, I get it yesterday. I need to review it, um doesn't have any municipal.
A school district, but not this.
Yeah, that's, yeah. All right, we set a date for the signs, we talked about Penflex. Are we off?
I do.
Oh, okay, cause the screen just went black.
Well, the TV's are solid, I thought it'd be a little disconcerting to see this.
Uh I had a resident talk about recycling bins, uh I'll hand this off to beautification.
Oh, boy.
Aren't you excited you got that?
Cause I, 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 I didn't know if that would go under beautification or waste management, but uh something, because though. The, the committee may decide to pick out some uh garbage cans, we'll talk about that later. And then the seniors, there's five seats left for the Hello Dolly on June eighth, which is a great thing for our seniors. Um they already have thirty-eight people signed up for forty-two seats, so. And.
That's barbecue, you know.
Second annual.
Yeah, hello Dolly, so at the C R tape, can't beat it. That is all I have, except for now we have questions from the media, and I think Cat is Kevin.
I actually have questions tonight. Um since you were talking about trees on the military, is there an update on the trees along Main Street? I believe they're pear trees, a few of them are dying.
Yeah, we have been, it's been in discussion, and the, the big thing with those. Is we're concerned about the root growth around possible pipes. Now normally, in larger cities, they have tree boxes that go into the ground. And the box keeps the roots contained, and then when the tree is done, you just pull the whole tree out and the box remains, I'm. We're a little concerned right now that if we pull the whole tree out, we may be pulling out other things with it. Uh so. We are focusing right now with the uh walkable homer, and that is taking most of our, our people to get that done this year. Uh but we have been in discussion and this will be something else for the beautification, buddy. I'm partially joking on that one, um that we'll, we'll talk about finding the right tree for downtown.
We do have an arborist.
Yeah, we have an arborist on retainer, well, not on retainer, but uh budgeted for. So, but as far as our, our focus this year is the walkable homer sidewalks. And uh we'll put a plan together. I can probably talk with Phil and we can probably do some exploratory. Uh poking to see what exactly lies underneath the trees.
Okay, and then uh my other question was with um, you know, the Community Fair Grant was important, I know with the D R I renderings. It just showed up through the basketball court, is that still the plan? Is that still the plan or is that successfully changed?
We will be going back when we RFP, we will be getting another design. Uh, consortium and to take a look at, at that. Yeah, it's still, it's gonna be a work in process. And Ed has very strong, strong feelings about that, but we won't get into that right now.
Yes, yes.
The other question. All right, I have nothing for executive tonight, so I will accept a motion to uh, adjourn.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm gonna motion that we adjourn.